Good.
Morning, you're all right.
Yeah.
Walks down there in the corner.
I.
All right.
Good luck.
Yeah. I'll be thinking about you.
The liar.
Oh, was I?
All right, it's six thirty. We're gonna get started. If everybody's ready, I would like to call to order the public hearing and special school board meeting for the Atlantic Community School District Board on August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. So the way this is gonna work, we're gonna have a public hearing on the high school roof replacement. Is that right? That's part of public hearing. And then the the issuance of approximately eighteen point five million dollars in school infrastructure, sales services, and use tax revenue bonds. So we're going to do that, then that hearing closes, and then we're gonna move into a school board special meeting where we'll have some discussion of those items as well, and then action items on the table for that. So can we have our call to order, please?
Jody Goodrich?
Yes.
Jenny Jordan?
Yes.
Josh McLaren?
Yes.
Lauren Klein?
Yes.
Kristi Bowden?
Yes.
Okay, I'll leave someone to make a motion to open the public.
My move, we open the public hearing.
Second.
Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
At this time, we can have public comment. Lisa, is there anyone who signed up to speak?
I have no one signed up to speak for the high school roof replacement.
So do we need to close that, or do we just?
Move the announcement.
Okay. So then the the second item that's on that is the the hearing on the used tax revenue bond, sales tax.
We have one person that has signed up, and then we also received an email from another person that I presented to the board. So Austin?
Great.
I'll give you a go. Let me start my time until I get up here. I got a lot to say. First off, I want to introduce myself as Justin Williams, former educator in the district. I've lived here most of my life, okay? Going through some of this, I've been walking around town, and I I wanna say that I am not some keyboard cowboy who's getting up on the internet, talking trash, and not willing to come out here and talk to you face to face. I actually have sent emails. I've tried to engage. I've had one more board member engage me. I I appreciate that. But I just wanna start this out by saying, no. I'm not here tonight to to oppose the progress, but I'm here to advocate for financial responsibility. Eighteen point five million dollars in bonds is going to cost our district an interest. A conservative estimate is six, or sixteen point two million dollars. So for every one dollar we spend, we are getting charged interest of one dollar. That's a conservative estimate. That's if we get three point five percent interest, okay? You know, the other thing I wanna say with that is we don't know all of our costs for this building. Okay, we're proposing putting a a fifty, sixty, seventy thousand foot, I don't know. I've asked for the renderings. I haven't got them. Fieldhouse. We talked about that. What are your costs behind this field house after you get your building built? What's your cost of maintenance? What's your cost of cleaning? What's your cost of increased utility? What's your cost of insurance? Okay, we know I just told you what your interest is gonna be. That's a ton of money that some of those things are gonna make dramatic impacts on your general fund. Okay, and we don't have a ton of room for that in our general fund, but they will. Just the cleaning over the twenty five year loan is gonna cost you two point five million dollars. That's simple math. Okay? That's simple math, because you gotta add employees if you're gonna put sixty thousand square feet on a building. Okay? I don't know of any other district that has an eighteen point five million dollar field house. Do you? There's none. The ones around here that have field houses, the district that I know of, that field house cost them one point five million dollars for today's dollars. Emperor Catholic is the other one, and that definitely didn't cost eighteen point five million dollars. And we've got a problem with other buildings. We need to take care of those problems first. The way that this bond is set up from a public perception, and it's their perception is their reality, is that we prioritize an athletic facility over that of an educational facility. Now, I don't know if that's what you mean to do or not, but what I do know is that's what the public perception is, and their perception is their reality. And the other thing is, there's not a lot of information out there about this, folks. You look at your saved dollars. Saved dollars are going down. Why are saved dollars going down? Saved dollars are going down because of tuition vouchers for private schools. You lost two hundred thousand dollars this year. Guess where those tuition vouchers are going? They're going up. They're going up, folks. It's not gonna go down. It's in. Well, those private school tuition vouchers are coming out of your saved dollars. You've never bought in two million, which has been a statement that's been put out there that I know of, and I've asked for the numbers. Okay, you're gonna bring in one point six. You can't estimate two million. You have to estimate one point six. I think the biggest thing that the public wants to see out of this is for you guys to prioritize the school that needs it the most. If we're gonna bond against saved dollars and we're gonna charge that credit card limit up, we need to make sure that we're taking care of the school that needs it. That shouldn't have to be a vote, and if we are gonna spend eighteen point five million dollars, we should have a chance to vote on it as a public. Not just the stroke of a pen by the school board or five votes. You will be tying that, you'll be tying dollars up for twenty five years. Look at your bus fleet right now. I drive just by your bus fleet right now. Every one of your activity buses has a big black dot in the middle of the hood. Are we maintaining things the way we should? You can drive out by the bus garage right now, folks, and you can drive by your buttons, and you have chipping paint. When I drive into town every day and I pass those buses, I can't believe that. Why? It's because we're not maintaining things. And as a board, years ago, you voted to reduce maintenance on buildings as cost-saving measures, which has, and cleaning on cost-saving measure. You can go back and look at the board. I know some of you guys just looked up like, you know what he's talking about? I was at the board meeting when you reduced those things. Okay, you reduced cleaning rooms and maintenance on buildings that save costs. What happens if we get in that crunch again? We've got a sixty thousand square foot building. We're just not gonna maintain that, and then we're gonna come back to the public and ask for more money? Okay, I don't wanna oppose it. I actually think you have needs that you need to put on. But I think you've gotta really, really step back on those needs and really step back and listen to what your public's saying. I've been out there walking around, and I purposely did not go to the teachers because I did not want a bunch of teachers signing my petition for school board. I wanted to go out and talk to the public. I walked around the public and I talked to people on all sides of the tracks, and I didn't run into one person who was for this. Not one, folks. And leadership roles, we gotta step back when we have those situations. We gotta step back, and we gotta say, this isn't working. We can't do this. I go back to this. I don't think we know numbers. Is that my timer?
It has been five minutes.
Okay, so I'm just gonna say this, and follow me. I hope you, and I urge you to vote no on those action items coming up. I urge you to reset. I urge you to get a committee that is representative of the public. And I urge you to make sure you move forward in the interest of the public, because this is not in the interest of the public. It's in the interest of a few, not many. Thank you.
So we had also received a public comment from Tammy DeBoard, who sent an email. And it's a bit lengthy. I'll just say that I'll say that the concerns that she's voicing are similar to other emails that the board has been receiving this this week, I would say, which is, if anybody else had a chance, we got it kind of late, but. And as far as there's a lack of, there's a sense that there's a lack of communication, and there is, similar to what Mr. Williams had said, a feeling that by doing the field house through our saved money, that that is prioritizing it over over the other, all of the other projects, which, you know, Washington is the largest, but there's many, many other projects encapsulated in that. And those, that was basically what was the content of her of her comment, which the the whole board has received copies of all that, so. Hope that's okay that I'm summarizing that there. So I will take a motion to close the hearing at this point.
Second.
Josh?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Kristi?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
And at this point, I'm going to, it is six forty one. I will call to order the school board special meeting, and we will begin with full call again.
Lauren McClain?
Yes.
Kristi Bowden?
Yes.
Jody Goodrich?
Yes.
Jenny Jordan?
Yes.
Josh McLaren?
Yes.
So close followers of our board know that usually the second meeting of each month is a it's a board work session is what we call it, and usually that means there's no action items on it. The board is taking the opportunity to talk about some long-range planning, issues that are coming up, things like that. It's a sort of more of a deep dive kind of a meeting. But because it's the beginning of the school year, and we have a whole bunch of stuff going on, instead of doing that work session, we're just having, this is another meeting that has action items on it. So, and so I will take at this point a motion to approve the agenda.
I saw you.
Second.
Kristi?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes. Okay, so we have three discussion items tonight. The first one is to talk about bids that we have received for the high school roof replacement, phase one. The second item is to discuss the bond referendum and master plan review, and then the third item is the Bull Creek possible project. And after that, we'll have action items. So we're gonna start with the high school roof replacement. Is Austin, are you gonna speak to us?
Okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Austin with Snyder and Associates. I believe that you had received a memorandum that I'd sent out this afternoon. It's kind of just a summary of of bid results. You'd also received last week the full bid results, so. I think I'll run down through that, and then if anyone has any questions thereafter, we can address those. Is that okay?
Are you talking about the tabulation of bids, document?
Correct. So I also sent out this memorandum. Do you see that?
Should be on your desk.
Oh, cool, on paper. Thank you.
That was just kind of a summary that I put together because that bid tabulation, it's kind of complicated. So in working with Russell Pack through this roof replacement project, this is phase one of the high school here, and we put together a package that we saw was fitting for the replacement of that roof. So on August twelfth, we held a bid letting. We received thirteen bids. Those bids ranged from a hundred and four thousand to one hundred and eighty-eight thousand two fifty. Basically, we had a base bid amount that covered replacement of the roof, so that's giving you a new roof membrane, new sheet metal, everything as if it were new. Then we did an alternate A, which was for protective matting. So on the summary of low bids, it breaks down those numbers of between the top two bidders. So with that alternate A amount, you can see that it changed the low bidder between bidder one and bidder one A. So I can explain that further, but I think, you know, basically, we're we're down to two bidders. And the gist of it is, do we wanna have that alternate A included in the contract or not? So what that alternate A is, is a protective mat. That mat is a protective layer that goes underneath the rock. So the roof up there now is a rubber membrane. It's a river rock ballast that holds that rubber down. This protective mat would just be an added layer of protection there.
Where would it go?
It would go directly on top of that rubber membrane below the rock. Benefits of that are puncture resistance, basically, UV protections, and which, you know, can extend the life of your roof. So it was just a thing that I felt was, hey, let's just see what the cost of it is, and we don't have to sign up for it, but at least we'll know what the cost of it is. So.
The problems we have with the roof now is that did we have some of those punctures happening?
There aren't. So what you're encountering now is basically perimeter problems, and that's due to just the age of it. You've gotten just short of thirty years out of the roof, so, which is phenomenal. So what we see a little bit in that puncture side of things is that rock that's up there starts to shale over time, and you know, will create a puncture possibly, you know? It all has to do with how much traffic is on the roof, probably not much, but, you know, as time goes on, that rock does shale, kind of breaks into pieces and becomes sharper. So.
It says with the possibility of extended roof life, does that give us like an extended warranty on the?
No, so with this package, and this is very standard in the this type of roof, it is a twenty-year manufacturer warranty and a two-year warranty. So it's not necessarily gonna extend that warranty at all, but hopefully just extend your life of it, or, you know, maybe create less issues along the way.
Were there specifications for that mat, or so there similar products that they're applying?
Correct. So that was, you know, one big goal in the whole project was everyone bidding apples to apples. And so they're following the same thicknesses, the same methods, the same insulation, and the same ASTM standards, so.
So Austin, can you explain why there's such a big difference between the two companies?
I knew you could ask that. So I can't, honestly. It's just, you know, it's kind of that bidders, maybe they see that it's more effort than than what the other guy thinks it is. I think that it it probably is a lot more work for them that, you know, when they're replacing this roof, they're kind of replacing it in sections. And so I would look at White Castle probably values that delay in putting that ballast rock back on at a lot more time than what what your second would.
What what is this for a phase project? How many did we?
So we determined four phases. And this phase pretty much covers the auditorium, the commons, the stage, and the entryway. We tried to split the phases to be fairly equal, but this particular roof is very large, and it's probably the largest phase.
Is White Castle, how many that you've worked with?
I haven't directly worked with them, but I did research both of these companies on this particular product. White Castle seems to be a very renowned company. They're based out of Omaha, but they have several remote offices, to my knowledge, and they, I think they've been in business for about forty years. They were able to provide me several references that I did reach out to. So I would consider them certainly a responsible bidder contractor. Rigid Edge Exteriors, they, I've also worked with them in the past. Sorry, I hadn't worked with White Castle. I have worked with Rigid Edge. They're a more local company doing multiple roof types. They have done this type of roof before. So I think that they are also a responsible bidder in my eyes. So.
So if we're, if we're doing separate bids for every phase, so does that mean we can end up with four different contractors, like working on the same roof?
It is possible. So in this specification booklet, it's very important that as time goes forward, that you hopefully put on the same type of product and specify those further phases similar to to what we did on phase one. And you know that you wanna keep the consistency with, you know, one thing that you're be able to see from the ground is the edge metal, so that's something that, you know, needs to be held consistent from time to time. As far as a membrane factor, I don't picture a lot of differences there. You may be carrying multiple warranties, you know, with different companies, but as far as quality, they're gonna be all pretty simple, so.
And when is the plan to have everything done?
So in this specification booklet, we had December thirty first of twenty twenty five. In speaking to the these two contractors this week, they didn't give me any reason that they wouldn't be able to accomplish it by then, but our window of good weather obviously is closed also. So I just know that there are some issues up there that I know Russell had stated to me that he was ready to get them taken care of, but I should abstract this as quickly as possible.
The board have any further questions?
I will mention just one last thing. We did receive thirteen bids, which is really great. That's pretty uncommon. So I think people want to work here, so that's great. So the numbers, the numbers show it, though. It's, it was a very, very good pricing. I think when we originally put this cost estimate together, we were in the like mid one fifties range. So.
Implement my, I'm gonna go back to the that extra protective that or membrane. I mean, obviously, you put that on as an alternate, seeing value in it.
I I did. I I think it's, it's something that is a little bit new to me, but from a construction standpoint, it sure makes a lot of sense.
Doing it while you're up there and just, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does the board want to have any further discussion? Or was something we read? Okay. Okay, our next discussion item is to talk about the bond referendum and the master plan reveal. So we have been hearing from some people who have opinions about this similar to the things that that Mr. Williams said and that that Tammy DeBoard wrote in, some other emails and stuff we've gotten. A lot of what I'm seeing, I don't know about the rest of the board, because obviously, there's a lot of people who communicate with us, will communicate with all of us, sending emails, other people. Obviously, each of us have our own conversations that that happen from time to time. And I actually did just wanna say, if you guys would just have patience with us, if you write to us like the day of the meeting, it is a little hard. A lot of us work, and it is a little hard for us to to get to all of that communication. And so, you know, public forum is always a good opportunity to come and talk to the board. If you're writing to us, I think all of us read our email, like, so we do like read it, but as far as like reading it before the meeting, it's a little tough when we get it late. So, but, you know, we do appreciate it. I'm hearing a theme, and I kind of, you know, wondering if the rest of the board, what I'm hearing is, for one thing, that people are feeling frustrated, that they feel like they haven't had enough communication or enough understanding about different elements of what we're talking about. That seems legitimate to me. I I don't think we've been doing a great job of our communication to this point. And I think we identified that as a need, and we've been saying that for a while. The other thing that I'm hearing is that people think that by using the saved money for the field house, but putting all the rest of the projects out for out for a vote for a GL bond in November, that that shows that we're prioritizing the field house. Would you, is that fair that that's one of the things that we're hearing from people? And I I'm kind of like, I I've I don't, I don't often do this, but I've been really sort of wrestling with how the the communication problem is very frustrating to me, too, because I really pride myself on having good communication and thinking it's really important. And I you know, I can sit here and say, we are not, we are not trying to be non-transparent. We're just not doing a great job of letting every single person know everything they wanna know when they wanna know it. And then in the age that we live in, then social media takes over and people just start saying things, which may or may not be factual. I I think what we're trying to do is that we're trying to solve multiple problems that this board sees. Like this is, this has been part of a master plan process that we've been engaged in for months and months. And so we're not just, it's not sort of coming out of the blue like, oh, we're gonna build a field house. This is like, we're being responsive to things that we've been hearing from the community. So right now, we're hearing a lot from the community, from people who are saying, no field house, you know, we want academics, not athletics. We wanna fix our buildings and, you know, not prioritize sports. But we've been hearing for like ten years from people who are saying, this community, not even just our students, but the community, needs more gym space. And our students, our student athletes, who we do absolutely value, we have like a majority of our students participate in athletics, they need to have up-to-date places to practice and to like weight room and locker room and all that kind of stuff. So we actually, the reason we were talking about that is because we're being responsive to what we've been hearing from people. Along with that, we know we have this problem at Washington, and so we really, we really pushed when we started our master plan to say that we really, we really wanna do stuff at Washington. We we really, we all know that that's a problem. Even though, I will say, the Washington staff has been amazing. I really like, I've been on the board for six years, and I have not heard Washington staff coming here being like, oh, it's so hard to work there, and, you know, I I really have not heard that. I mean, the the problems at Washington have been more like what we see with our own eyes. And then, you know, when you start to ask, people do say, yeah, that'd be great if we did this or had this. So we're trying to address that. We're trying to address security with what happened in Minneapolis. We want our buildings to be as secure as we possibly can. It is something we talk about. It has been a priority for several years for us. And this, the the bond project we're talking about, the security upgrades will be to every single building, and it's a focus on the entrances and making those up to the best possible standard that we can.
Lauren, can I interrupt you? Can you expand on that a little bit? Because there's a lot of comments. I don't understand what what is the, what is the? What is the, what is the security like, you're building to explain that because?
Yeah, do you, do you have a matter? Would you be able to say like how we?
Well, I guess it's just gonna be more, I don't know what you would call it, like two-tiered or something like.
Yeah.
Uh, I think the whole thing is not being able to like walk right into the building and walk right to a classroom or walk directly to the. Wherever the principal or whatever, I mean, obviously I think a lot of it has to do, I mean, I would say. There's probably, I don't know, maybe a law enforcement. Uh, idea to it, but it's obviously going to be like an architect thing, like every building is going to be different, how they can. Does I, I don't know if it's double, it might be double paying gas, glass, some places it might be. Two steel door, I don't, you know, that's why I don't, I don't know that we can say this is what it's gonna look like at every building, but obviously I think the, I mean, it's the. You know, the, whatever that is to, you know, reinforce, I don't know if that's the right word, that those, to make those entrances more safe.
Some of it has to do with like line of sight even.
Yeah, there's, well, I mean, look right here. You know, you come in the front door, you come right down into the.
They only go through one way and they have to be allowed entrance in and having that office.
Right, more than.
The office is right there, and then there's also another layer to it of the architectural elements outside. Or protection against trying outside elements coming.
That's right, yeah. So at the high school, for instance, we've got this big wide, all this glass that's right there, and that probably is not, you want to kind of narrow that entrance. Um, you want to make it so that, you know, if someone's a.
And to be clear, none of that has been drawn up. That's just been provided to us through um. The research that's been done on the master plan to say, these are the deficiencies in your building, so that's fair. So when people are looking for where are the schematics on what security entrance looks like. If that's not, their money has not been spent on that.
Yeah, it's conceptual at the state yet.
Right, we haven't engaged architects, um, if you know, a lot of that is, um, you know, the kind of estimates that we have are based on sort of. Our master plan group, with the experience they have with many, many school buildings and sort of, okay, secure entrances. You know, and they're looking at our specific buildings and saying, this is what we would think maybe they would need, and then they put an estimate on it. But a lot of that stuff can fluctuate as we would go through. The remainder of the process with the, with the building renovations and changes. Um. We're also, and, and sort of, so there's the security and then there's the, the, the walkway, which um going between. The middle school and Schuler was also trying to address more than one concern and need that we have. Um. We're also very aware that we only do bonds like every decade or so. Is that about, you know, but like the, the general obligation bond, so we're, we're not. It's not like we're saying, oh, we want to have a field host next year, like let's build it. We're, the master plan is meant to like carry us through, like we're looking at. You know, kids who are not even in our district yet, like what are their needs gonna be? And so we're trying to plan going forward. So even if for a lot of people, they might feel like, oh, you know, I don't feel like I need a field house right now, or like that's something that we could wait on. We certainly could, but we don't want to go through the whole master plan process in a year or even in two years. Like, you know, we really kind of, we want to be able to say, this, these are the needs we're trying to address as many of them as we possibly can. While being fiscally responsible, which I'll get to that in a second, and so we want to, um. We want to really like try to pare down, what are the projects that most need doing? And I'm not even talking about some of the like smaller projects that are in the midst of, of all of this, you know, the Schuler bathrooms, which I didn't know were terrible, but apparently everyone who uses that knows they are. Um, you know, so, so fixing that kind of stuff and saying, we're just gonna, we're gonna borrow some money and make fixes to all of these things that need fixing. And we're trying to prepare the district for, you know, needs that we anticipate for keeping up to speed with other districts. Um, Mr. Williams talked about us having this sort of pressure from competition. Yeah, like we're totally aware of that, like students get to open and roll, guys, and whether it's to an online school or whether it's coming from somewhere else. They get to pick, and so if we let our stuff deteriorate. So that um, it does look like we're not kind of taking care of our, of our district buildings, then, you know, that's a problem. So we're thinking about that, but we're also aware that we want to be um. Fiscally responsible about the tax burden of the people who are here now and the people who are going to be here in the future. So we really did sort of like look very carefully at the um. At, at the whole project and we kept on saying, well, you know, what is this gonna, what effect is this, the geo bond I'm talking about now? Um, what effect would that have? And so the number got out to the community, there was a forty million dollars we were gonna do property taxes for. Which we weren't, because we were always planning to finance a big chunk of that with money that we weren't able to get in district. And money that is designated for, which is partly what Save is for. Um, and then, so we wanted to figure out that property tax geo bond, how can we make it so that it's not gonna have a very significant impact on property taxes? And I'll say that that's part of the reason that Travis is here, who's one of our, our, our bond advisors. And to kind of talk about what that property tax impact is likely to be for people. So the reason for shifting the projects wasn't because we were trying to communicate that we were prioritizing one or the other. We really were trying to make it so that that, that geo bond in November would have less property tax impact on people. That's why we did it. Um, and so then we were able to say, well, you know what, we, because this district has been so fiscally responsible. We have this saved money available, we can borrow against it, against the anticipated, that's sales tax money. That's not, it's sales tax money that's coming from the whole state, right Lisa? I'm right, that's how that works. So that's not, that has nothing to do with, I mean, if we're concerned that we're not gonna have as much save revenue, it's because. People won't be buying as much in Atlanta and in the rest of the state of Iowa. Um, that's why there's an anticipation of that money increasing, because as prices increase. That saved money revenue increases, um, because it's a percentage tax on the things that people buy. So. That's, that money is able to be designated, and that's what the, we're here for tonight. Is to be able to say, we're going to choose to take a, a loan against that future income that we'll be getting. Um, and again, Travis, I hope you're taking notes, because I want you to be able to say. Correctly, the amount that we'll be getting in, that we anticipate getting in from the save. And the amount of that each year that goes toward repaying this loan, because that's essentially what we're gonna be doing. Um, and the other thing I'll say is that there, the other constraint that we're working with is that there's, there's um. From the state level in Iowa, there's a lot of uh pressure on school districts in terms of. Hmm, there's more control being exerted from Des Moines, I'll say, over the way that the money gets spent at the local level. Anyone who's a fan of local control over schools and cities and stuff like that should not especially appreciate that trend. But part of that means that we do have to sort of anticipate, well, what's it gonna look like in the future for us? Um, if we start doing this building now, it's going to be more, more opportune to be able to do this project this year. And that's part of the reason that we push it, even though we knew we were on a tight timeline, and so our communication has not been as good. And I, I, I actually just, I want to apologize for that. I mean, I, it's. It, you know, it's a risk we took on, and maybe it's me, because as for president, I have not managed our, our time as well and managed our agenda as well, but um. You know, we're, I, I think the amount of time we've spent like looking at this, looking at alternatives, I, I think it's really good for Atlantic. It's, it's good for our kids, like, you know, I just. Um, I just, I, you know, I, I would hate to see it go down because of uh our poor communication, but maybe that's where we're at. So that, that's really just been on my mind to kind of say to all these people who are like writing to us and. The kind of questions that we're getting, like I just kind of want to like try to. Try to clear things up, and my fellow board members, you, you know, keep me honest, if there's any part of that that I said that you guys don't think is true or you disagree with or. You want to add to it, I, I welcome that, I, you know, I'm sorry for giving speech, that's, I usually do that, but.
Well, I'm thankful for your speech. I thought it covered exactly what we've been doing for the last.
Yeah.
Ten months, our year.
Yeah, so, I, I was hearing, I was hearing that's really like a lot of those same, and you know, the questions that I'm getting, I, every, these people email to me and they're like. I just don't understand. I want to write back and I'm like, I know, I'm sorry, that's really fair. That, that you don't understand, and I appreciate people writing to us, you know, and coming and speaking and you guys coming here and watching. Because you want to learn about it, instead of just making a bunch of assumptions and throwing down their social media.
Uh, I think, I thought you summarized that very well. Uh, I, I would, if I could just add a couple things, one thing I would say, if there feels like there's a sense of urgency to this. Um, there is, partly because of the needs that we have. But also just because changes, and I'm not sure the, and if the general public knows this fine, but. We used to be able to have these types of elections several times a year. Um, we no longer have the opportunity to have a general obligation bond election several times throughout the year. It's only in November. So if we're going to make something happen, it's sort of like it, we do it now. Or we wait another year, and that was a discussion that this board had, so I just want to put that out there that. We knew going into this, we were gonna have to be really good at communication and getting a message out in a tight timeframe and. Things happen and it, and it, it didn't work that way. Um, in terms of general obligation bonds, and I think many people probably know this. Uh, to my knowledge, and can't go back farther than this, but we've had two in the last thirty some years. One was for this building that was built in nineteen ninety-five, and the last one was in that two thousand nineteen timeframe that did the outdoor. Called the outdoor facilities needs, so there's only been two general obligation. Bonds, so we've been very, very careful, and I think it's, in my opinion, it's a point of pride with this board to. Not continually go to the public for that, and when we do, to do it because it's of the utmost importance. Uh, all of the work that was done to um Washington, Schuler, the Lincoln Building. And the middle school was done with capital project funds that this board had. Either PEPOL or we now it's called SAVE, it used to be Silo, it used to be Local Penny, so that was sales tax money. Uh, when I first came on the board. In two thousand seven, we had um about seven, eight million saved up for that, and that is what funded. The projects that were done at Washington and Schuler, all the new windows, the elevators, um, all the HVAC. So I feel like the board was pretty responsible in saving that money. We bonded against sales tax revenue to do the middle school, because that was such a huge project. So that was not a general obligation, that was not property tax. That was used to do that renovation of the old high school or the middle school, so I just would say that and that. Um, that is a viable string to do a project. Um, we only committed about half of ours, and Travis can keep me honest, but I think that's rolling off in. Two years here, right? That we'll have that.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
Yes.
I'm already jumping ahead to twenty-seven, sorry. So that, we'll, we'll have that completely paid off. Uh, if we had to do that building today, I can't imagine, well, I can't imagine, because we did do it again because of the fire. Uh, so there is a sense with this board that we understand that costs are going up. That can we have an obligation to serve the kids that we have in the district now? Um, and if we have the opportunity to do that and to have. These kids have a better experience through all those needs that we've identified. I think, I don't wanna speak for myself, but that was my goal. Uh, it was really hard, Washington was the priority, safe entrances were the priority, um, but there's also this. Huge need that we just have been pushing back, that we need indoor space. Uh, for this community, so that's what I've had.
Appreciate your historical perspective, always.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I would just like to add, um, and people talking about transparency, um, when I got on the board. There was um a massive amount of potential projects that needed to be done. And in, you know, Luwip, we wanted to be fiscally responsible, how do we choose which projects are most important? How, how do we then look? That's why I hired the team to come up with that ten-year master plan for us to really determine. What the district's needs were, so we could, you know, set out in real time what was needed. And how we need to go about these projects, uh, you know, if, if people wanted to go back and look at our meetings over the last year, they, they could see that we had been working on that, but. Until, you know, things come to um more. You know, distinct plans and whatnot, people aren't necessarily going to be aware of them and, and think they just came recently, but this is. Something we have been working on for the greater part of the year.
I think the, it's always the wants and the needs, and I can tell you on my time on the board, and Dr. Amstein was here, we talked about needs and wants. Um, an extra facility was a want at the time, here we are ten years later. Um, I, I, I think we're past the, in my opinion, I think we're past the wants and needs, I think now we're maybe at a position where we need to prioritize our needs. I think all of these are needs, um, and, and I. The, I think the big question out there is what, is why the board is deciding to take. The other projects to a bond and use to save money potentially for the field house. I think that's the issue, isn't it? I mean, that's the way, that's what the people, and, and, and I look, we have the estimates from the construction company and, and really we. We can't do it. We, we can't do those projects with the saved dollars. Uh, you know, we can't, can't do Washington and the secure entrance, I mean, then we, I, I don't know how we decide which one's more important, the safe entrance or a Washington. Uh, I, I mean, I think this is, you know, the. I, the, the best uh way to, to meet all those needs, you know, and, and I don't know, two weeks ago when we had our meeting. You know, Travis was the one that taking the, I don't mean to throw it on you, but talking about scenarios and situations with the dollars, you know, the, the board, I don't even. Maybe other people had, I hadn't even thought about using saved dollars to pay for a field house facility until Travis came up with these options, he's like, well, hey, what about? Uh, what about this? Um, you know, so I think that's how we got to where we're at in such a, a small uh. Uh, win, window of time, I guess, if that's, um, you know, but I. You know, the, there's just not enough saved dollars to do those, I mean, if, if, if we just say hypothetically that. We don't want the field house, we don't need the field house, let's use the saved dollars to do that, I, I don't think we can do that, right? We can't do the Washington project to save the uh secure entrances, the uh skywalk for the lunchroom, you know, in between the schools, uh, there's something else. Uh, this kind of bathrooms at, 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 at Schuler, so I, I don't, I just don't think we can do that, I mean, I. So I think that's why the board chose to keep that as a bond issue or a, as a geo bond and, and then, you know, I think that's why we looked at that. Tax dollar or, or what that would be in that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks, everybody. Okay, Travis, can you just clarify for us a couple of those things about the specifics about the month?
There's a lot out there, um, and so maybe just to talk a little bit about process and procedure. Um. You know, this November election cycle makes things a lot more difficult. Because all of the final decisions are getting made over the summer, right? So a lot of it's happening with special meetings. And to kind of back up a little bit, um, you know, in early June, the, the board kind of arrived that, you know, this is what our facility plan looks like. Um, you know, and it was in that forty million of total project cost. And, you know, then wanted to take some time to make sure, you know, they understood the public, uh, there was a survey that went out. Um, and then, you know, based on those results, um, you know, we started just looking at what are all the financing options? Um, the district has a finite amount of sales tax resources available. Uh, and, you know, for this current year. And, you know, just kind of hammer on something that, that's been thrown out there, well, there's no way you're gonna have. Two million dollars of revenue, but the statewide revenue estimates for FY twenty-five, the year we just finished up. Uh, were one million nine hundred and thirty-three thousand eight fifty-five. So yes, uh, a little bit short of two million. Uh, but the district did add uh certified enrollment last fall for this fall. Um, so taking all that together, the numbers, um, as we get to when the first year he would be borrowing, it are right around two million. You know, and that's a, that's a number, we're using that same revenue per student number across the state. Uh, they have not yet released their FY twenty-six estimates, so when those come out, you know, we'll maybe have an adjustment. Now, it's not illogical to come up with a lower number, because the state has recently changed the way that they're paying out the sales tax revenue. The way that they're paying out the sales tax revenue. So if you go back and look at audited financials, it's gonna show. A little bit of a a lumpy uh schedule. So, um, so just to clarify there, I don't think anybody's necessarily trying to. To give false information, but just want to clarify what what the accurate information is there on the sales tax revenue estimates. So early on, um, we looked at a plan that would have been using about half of the sales tax revenues, so about a million. Um, and that was gonna push uh the bond vote up to a to a higher number at the thirty-three million dollar range. And so then the challenge was to look back, okay, can can we look at doing something a little bit different? And in which case we looked at a scenario with about seventy percent of the available revenues or about a one point four million dollar debt payment. Uh, over overtime. And so that's where, and then what I'll call this maximum, you know, seventeen to eighteen million dollars. Of projects could be funded out of the sales tax. So we started there looking at, you know, what's the amount that the district could come forward with? And then we came up with the uh the the bond referendum amount, um, you know, being where it's at, it's twenty-two and a half. Am I remembering that correctly? Twenty-two and a half million. So it was a, you know, dropping that number down significantly. Um, from from what we were originally looking at as options. So that's how the the financing plan you came together in terms of looking at at amounts. Um, in terms of timing. There's a, there's a reason why it's not all of the communication is out there yet. Because as we sit right now, there is a bond petition, um, that's that's available for signature. That would put the geo bond on the ballot in November. Uh, so the district isn't even sure that there's going to be a bond vote to whoever. Um, they have to get the signatures back in order to put that on the election, at which point more formal communication will go out now. With that, there's been some talking points available. Here's the estimated tax impact, et cetera, for the folks that are going around trying to seek signatures. But in terms of like the the immediate public communication and the formal newsletters and, you know, why isn't this out? Yeah, it may feel late. It it might be a little late, but of the forty-three districts that are going to referendum this fall. Most have not yet adopted the resolution calling the election. Uh, that's not due till September nineteen. Uh, I wouldn't say that you guys are on the early side of that, but you're not the last ones either. Um, so this is a little bit different from, you know, September elections. These wouldn't have been decided by. June and you would have had, you know, all summer to start communicating. So. A lot of the information as, you know, your board president, you know, kind of, I would say kind of pleaded like. We're working to get it out. It will get out. Uh, there's bond communication committee. Uh, or a company that's working on getting uh formal communication out. There are things about this that are fairly complicated. So the last thing anybody wants to do is miscommunicate or get partial communication out and not have the full story. Um, so if we could, you know, at the district, you know, just plead for a little bit more patience as they kind of. Get all their ducks in a row. There's, there's no question that is trying to be avoided at all here. Um, especially from a financial standpoint. I have that easy. You can ask me anything financially. I'm an open book. I don't live here. I don't vote on your project. Uh, but I can't really go on the spiel of like, well, why did you decide on XYZ project? Right? That's that's not coming from me. Uh, but on the financial front, happy to be uh an open book. Um, on on any of that information. We don't want anything confusing, nor does the board. Now, in terms of going back to this whole, what's on the ballot, what's not on the ballot? Uh, one of the things that was talked about in that August eleventh work session was trying to be clear. That the two projects aren't necessarily tied to each other. So we talked about a couple of different options. You know, the the first option was everything's meshed together, tied together. And so therefore, if somebody liked the improvements at Washington and the security improvements, but didn't like. The field house component. They either, they had to make a, we like it or we don't like it, thumbs up, thumbs down on the whole package. So part of the goal was that, was to separate. Um, so the initial goal was, well, could we separate all the things, Washington, security, et cetera, put it all on the sales tax? And and the answer is no. Uh, there there wasn't the right amount there. Um, so the decision then was made, well, let's put that on the ballot. We'll put the field house separate. Um, and and knowing that there's actually a little bit of nuance on what's required. So if they do, if what's on the ballot passes. The district has to go forward and do those projects. With tonight's action on the sales tax, the district has the option to do what's on the ballot. And that sounds like a nuance, and but it is, you know, there's one that's, you know, directed by the taxpayers and one that's directed by the board. So the board during the meeting, um, while not making a formal motion of this, gave indication that. Well, if if we go through the bond process and, you know, we're not successful in the election. Well, we're not just gonna speed forward and do a field house and, you know, thumb our nose at the public. That's, that's not the intention of this. Um, but it was to try to simplify the two projects and allow for an instance where. You know, there's a lot of negative feedback and, you know, they're not tied to each other because this field house. Is gonna have to take time iterations. And hopefully, you know, at the board level, as was discussed on August eleventh, they want to bring the budget down, look at things that could come. But the only thing they can deal with at this early time is like, well, we've got drawings. And fees, cost per square footage, so all we can go on and being responsible as board members is information we have. Wouldn't be responsible for the board to say, well, we've been given an estimate of sixteen million, but we're just gonna throw twelve on the ballot and hope for the best. Uh, because at that point, then you could actually be in a situation where you put something on the ballot you can't complete. And that is a violation of the taxpayer rights to vote on something that has a real number. So.
So Travis, if we pass the resolution for the eighteen point five or save. Yeah, we do not have to spend all of that. That's more like, that's like a ceiling.
It's a ceiling and you're not actually required to go borrow the money. All this is is an authorization, is a hearing. This never used to be a process until twenty nineteen. So if you're thinking about, well, we never had to do with sales tax. Well, that's true. That's true of everybody in the state. Uh, when the state legislature extended the tax from twenty thirty out to twenty fifty-one, they wanted to put in place a public input process. And that's what is in place tonight. You guys can continue to take feedback under advisement. And still decide, we don't want to do the field house at that scale. All this is doing is giving you the option to do it. And every board member at that meeting really gave indication like, well, that would be dumb if the other project does pass. Obviously, our priorities are the whole project, but we know the academic stuff um is very important. So the option would exist then at that point that you could, they could change their mind. They could repurpose. They could use different amounts, borrow less. Nothing locks this in and on some of the conversation with the board that night and. Was simply, well, you know, we're gonna need to study this more to make sure we have the right amount. What I told them was, well, that's great news. Um, but. You have to make a decision to hold a public hearing by September second. Or you do not have the option to do the field house this year. So it would automatically be delayed to even get authority for another year. So if it feels rushed, it was because, well, it it is, there's the hard deadlines that had to be met in order to make this public hearing process. If there's, you know, any criticism, it's like, well, why didn't the the board cancel all their vacations and activities all summer? And spend every night figuring this out in a month, right? The the reality is that Ford took a long time appropriately to vet through the plan, got to the plan in June. Decided we want some more input, put out a survey, took the survey and put in, and then tried to make a decision as quickly as possible in the month of August. Um, you know, most people are not calling special meetings to try to get that done. I give kudos to the board for being flexible and trying to prioritize this project, because otherwise everything's delayed. So to kind of step back, um, and just kind of talk through the 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 plan with the the geo bond. The twenty-two and a half million would be a two dollar and fifty cent debt service levy. Uh, of which this year, the district is paying off the debt with a dollar forty. That would be a dollar ten more this year on the levy rate than it was prior year for debt. That being said, over the last seven years, the district's debt levy has averaged uh over. Two dollars and eighty-six cents, I think, is the number. So this will be actually lower on average than the district has paid for debt. On a debt service levy rate than they have the past seven years.
So even after, if we do the geo bond as we've planned to in November. The amount that that will increase people's property taxes will still be less than. The average has been over the last seven years?
That's correct. Yep, yeah, lower than the average over the last seven years. And, you know, not to go in just like into a iconic detail on overall levy rates. But even with a a dollar ten increase, um, that would mark. The fifth lowest tax rate in the last twenty-four years for the school history. Uh, the only years lower than that have been the last uh four. Yeah, when you've been rapidly paying off the debt. Now, some of that's to be expected, right? Valuations have gone up. You've got less students overall. Your budgets do go down. So I'm not trying to say like your tax rate shouldn't. Have remained in that fifteen dollars per thousand range, whereas right now it's in that twelve fifty-two range. Um, but being in that thirteen dollar range is is very competitive with where you've been historically. A two dollar and fifty cent debt service levy rate. Uh, is pretty good. I mean, and if we look at your overall voter pebble levy at eighty-five cents. That's lower than the average across the state as well. Um, so those are some of the other resources. Um, I'll probably address maybe just one more item, and that would be um the ability to maintain facilities. You know, there, I I'm not aware of, you know, the statements that were made about reducing operating costs. I can only assume that those, those are accurate. That were part of some of the the budget reductions that the district had to do with reducing those costs out of the general fund. Uh, but what the district has been doing is using PEPAL and your surplus sales tax to continue some of those maintenance items. The district right now between their voter, your voter approved PEPAL, uh, the thirty-three cent regular PEPAL. Um, does receive approximately two point six million dollars annually out of there. So that one point four million dollar debt payment, and again, forecasted to be closer to two point eight. That debt payment will be about one half of your overall capital project funds as we would project five years out. Uh, so out of the the two point eight million that you're estimated to receive in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. It would be about one point four million of that. Um, of which then the district is using resources annually to pay for buses. Uh, and there's an allocation for how much that will be annually. Uh, you have technology initiatives, your one-to-one laptops. Um, uh, you have instructional software, things that the district has been very prudent of. Moving to sales tax and PEPAL in order to protect the general fund to pay for operations and teachers. Um, e- even though it feels like, yeah, every year you're talking about budget restrictions. Well, we can talk to the. The state about that because you get to grow your budget two percent per year and we know what's happened with costs. But there's been a a very prudent approach and allocating on a go-forward basis. Uh, approximately seven hundred thousand dollars to keep maintaining facilities. And the rough project right now, that's out of resources on hand, you know, not borrowing money for those. So there's a whole list of projects that we'll be able to kind of go through and, you know, dissolve, you know. I guess I would say kind of disclose, here are the things we've spent money on over the last ten years. It's gonna be very helpful. And I mean, the district hopes to get all that communication out.
Yeah, this part of the master planning, I mean, we did have a whole bunch of, you know, smaller projects and the tens of thousands. That were on that list. And a lot of them, we ended up saying, well, we're not gonna go to the voters for this. Instead, we're gonna figure out a way to pay for it out of the funds that we have. So that's already happening. That's been all part of the the process we've done of trying to balance that stuff out. Um, Christie, I think, did you have a question for James?
Well, I I was gonna ask you to talk about what the overall uh debt levy maximum is. It's two fifty is unfortunate, but I. First off, though, um, for mentioning that maintenance and the way that we pay for the maintenance of our buildings. Is different than the way we pay for hours to clean and to mow. Because when decisions were made to cut hours clean and mow, that was to keep teachers in the classroom. And that's out of the general funding.
Well, I already went over my time. Nobody gave me a timeline, but it's self-imposed. I talked longer than I meant. So. Um, certainly, we're willing to be an open book resource, provide answers to questions. I would also ask for the same that you're asking for patients. We, I think we have forty-one referendums that we're working on at this fall. Um, as a team, so um certainly want to be as responsive as possible. Um, and the reality is there's a lot of districts who find themselves with facility needs. And, you know, what used to be a cheap HVAC project, you know, no longer can just be done, you know, patchwork. Seen a lot of. HVAC projects that that became expensive and, um, you know, certainly districts are trying to. You know, be as responsible as possible with the resources, which is why, you know, I challenged the the district also to say, well. Can you guys come up with more so that there can be less tax impact? And had to talk Lisa like, well. Yeah, I can get comfortable with this amount, you know, and and so it's a good back and forth, right? We we challenge each other to come up. With the best financing plan you come up with. And, you know, I think the district put forth a good one. It's. But I can't, I can't say that, you know, I know everything about the projects and everything you're doing. That would be outside of my scope of. Scope of work, but from a a financing standpoint, you know, we feel like we've. Pushed enough to not be conservative, but still put in enough resources that you can continue to maintain your facilities. At the level that you've heard of from in your master plan. Um, so I I do think you you've been very responsive that. And again, resulted in a tax impact that was about sixty cents lower. And what kind of was originally talked about. So there was some talk about closer to three dollars and ten cents. And so the movement to get it down to two fifty. Um, was was certainly something the board was was seeking to do.
Thank you.
So could you, uh, and I'm just throwing out another situation to ask for clarification. So. Could you, uh, i- if you put this sales tax for the field house. I, for lack of a better word, on hold, could you have that hearing again? I don't know, say January, February, and maybe in the meantime, I don't want to say, come up with a more detailed. Field house, if that's how we choose to do that with better numbers than just throwing, does that, um, does that? What I'm trying to say, does do those, does the save part follow the calendar also? Or is that different? My understanding from this is you would just have to have a hearing with the difference. Verbiage in that if we would, as as an option, just say, okay, we're gonna. Go ahead with the geo bond. We're gonna wait on the save for the field house and talk about it in. At whatever, January or March or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, the the reality is, is no, no options have been, you know, ruled off the table in terms of waiting. There's nothing that says you have to start the field house project next year. And I think the discussion is around the board level is. Y'all felt that there was more research that needed to be done. Putting them together, you know, puts it on the the same timeline of getting approval and following your master plan. So to say like, well, we're just gonna carve out half of our master plan and and do that later, it's a possibility. Yeah, you can certainly do it. Does it stop you from doing that, though, by approving what you do tonight? No. I mean, you could still do that as a board. You could say. That we're gonna keep looking, looking at it and keep approving that. We're gonna, you know, we 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 heard the objections. We take those under advisement. Um, we're still gonna approve our approximate not to exceed amount, but, you know, we're gonna continue to look for ways to make that cheaper. Um, you're not on the hook to spend, you know, sixteen million dollars on a on a a field house. Uh, but if you design it and the options that the board wants is after you get through design, gets you to that point. You know, you can, you can form committees to spend more time researching. That that doesn't. Mean that you have to stop that process, which is some of the different part between the geo authority and the sales tax authority. Right. Sales tax gives you the option, geo gives you the obligation to move forward.
I I guess I, and I maybe I wasn't, I wasn't meaning to. I I guess I, and I maybe I wasn't, I wasn't meaning to throw it away for a few months, I guess. Where I was at is is it seems like that's the focus, um, and and I think we need to focus on the other stuff. I I mean, you know, it's all a need in my opinion, but I'm only one person.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and so that I was just, if that was.
No, I've I I've got a district who um had an athletic complex improvement that they they approved last June, so June of twenty twenty-four that they were looking at. Um, and they got through it and, you know, they started to hear like, hey, let's let's really think about how we want this to work. I have a call this Friday with them for the first time that they're now starting to get into the design and thinking about funding that project. They've had authority for that for fifteen months. Um, so they they again, started the process to get the authority again, because there there's timelines that you need to be conscious of and 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 you're you're up against one now. Delaying then, you know, just pushes it off. If you don't don't approve this, you you start over uh with with the hearing process. This, but there's nothing to say you can't take the same route that that district is like, okay, we earned the advisement. We hear that people want to see more details on this. We're not gonna borrow money until we do it. We're gonna, we're gonna keep this process going because it's started, but we're not going to move forward with it until we get plans and specs. You still have to hold hearings on plans and specs for the project before it goes out to bid. So this is not a done deal, rubber stamp, you'd have to move forward. It just gives you the authority, and this process is new since twenty nineteen.
Would any of the board members have any further comments or questions for each other or the panelists or?
In that case, uh, we'll move on to the next discussion item, which is the Bull Creek project. Um, Dr. Johnson, do you feel like you could say a little bit about it?
I'm gonna start off by saying about a year and a half ago, Iowa State University had proposed to the City of Atlantic and Mayor here at Tracy Mindlet, yeah, or um to do a project um with with our Bull Creek Waterway, you know, these um the city tried to get going last year on this this grant. Um, and they just ran out, we just ran out of time, so presented a little um too late for us to kind of react to it. So um with the Bull Creek project and uh the Iowa State students came in, evaluated the full Bull Creek and the drainage of the creek, especially when it starts to, um, we had a heavy rain and it starts to flood. We've seen that happen before even last year. And so they came through with this proposal um for a retention pond.
Detention, which is different.
Detention, yeah, I've been studying. In front of the middle school schule, and that grassy area where we know, you know, the Bull Creek runs through. If you and and uh
Well, I'll just, I'll just jump in because I, you know, I have heard a little bit more about it and um, it's the, they've they studied all of Bull Creek and its impact throughout Atlantic. And so there's like actually several phases to the remediation, basically, to prevent any sort of like massive amounts of flooding, right, Grace? That's the idea. And so we already do have the Bull Creek runs in front of in front of the middle school, and there's already sort of like this this dip where water could collect. But based on the surveying that they did, they think potentially that area could be deepened so that it was able to, if there were a flooding event, it would capture a whole bunch of water rather than letting it go and flood. Would it flood houses or would it go downtown? Like, where does it go over there? Oh, okay, okay. So, yeah, between middle school and downtown, everybody who the the water runs through could be getting flooded. And by the water being captured in front of the middle school in such a situation, that would help to prevent that. That's my understanding how the detention basin works. There isn't supposed to be standing water there. It's just a a big like place to catch the water if needed. I don't understand how there's not like a big pit in the ground. That's the part I'm a little bit confused about, but um, so it they kind of need, they want to start applying for grant money. And to do that, they need to have some surveying done so that they actually know what it would be like, how much water it could hold, you know, what would be the impact, all that kind of stuff. And I think really that's kind of all that this this group, there's a bull creek about many, um, which is kind of working on this, basically to try to find funding for the city to do this. And they want to know if, and I just said, I kind of wanted the board to know about it. I I didn't want them to start surveying the land and that, you know, talking about, you know, this big potential pond in front of the in front of our buildings um without the board kind of looking at it, thinking about the impact and stuff. But I think we can't really know until that initial surveying work gets done.
What happens if it becomes a big pong or a big mud hole? And I know that's not the intention, but.
Yeah, I know.
Then we gotta deal with it if it is.
You know, that's some of the stuff that I'm trying to talk about.
I think that's the proper design. You know, that's what they really focus to avoid, and, you know, it's really basically water and and statewide downstream banks, to my understanding, but they just really, that's the concept, it's right. But I think as far as uh, something that will be nice for natural, it will be necessarily concerned. But as design would continue or if it did move forward, it would certainly be something that we'll keep attention on that. It's been designed.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so, you know, I don't even think we necessarily need to take action, but I I did want the board to sort of be aware of this and that that sort of is the the plan going forward is, and I, as I understand it, the 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 part that involves district land is kind of like the the phase one, like if they they are going to try to strengthen. What'd you say, strengthen like a what? The channels or?
The most, you know, water detention, water retention based on when water is in the tanks, they're glad now the stream channels.
Stabilize the channels, yeah. So they'll want to stabilize the channels, but that comes later. Um, so after they, that's correct. So does the board have any questions at this point, or does it sound okay to us? You know, for them to move forward considering it.
For this piece of information, it might be helpful to some of the questions asked, but um, the Clean Water Iowa team last week, and we did another survey, and so questions, they they definitely have a plan. They wanted to be a um, a classroom, an outdoor classroom. They would put in a water cell. They would clean up what's there. Um, because they walked the path there, looked at all of that, and so they would plan to make it so it was, you know, that's okay, so in the clean water.
Okay, this is our organization.
This is, this is the Urban Conservation's Clean Water Iowa.
Okay.
Organization. So that's what we got in the last week because they do have, they took that funding um and they came and gave us an assessment and uh said that they would work alongside us as well as other organizations in Iowa State as well. So, um, it isn't anything we're going into lightly by any stretch of the means. And again, Snyder is involved in that. Basically, the first step is the location. That's basically the first step, the place, what is it, how and where is we put this first step? So that's why we're coming to you for your.
Thank you. So Clean Water Iowa would actually be part of their design to um add an educational component to it. And so we would have right outside our building. We'd be able to to take students out there and learn stuff about water flow. I guess, so. Okay, so um if people have any questions, it sounds like um Emily Kennedy, who's on the household, and the mayor, you know, would have more information we can check with, but I just wanted the board to know who's playing. Okay, does anyone have any questions on that, Rachel? All right. In that case, we're gonna move on to the action portion of our agenda. Um, action item A is to um approve a high school roof replacement bids. Um, and pretty much, we, you know, we have these two bids that sort of, in a way, both of them are the cheapest, depending on what option we choose. So your motion is going to need to reflect um which of those we're we're choosing them.
I move we approve uh the rope replacement phase one bid to rigid edge exterior, uh, and I also uh believe that we should add the protective matting. I think one one hundred seventeen thousand five fifty and fifty-seven cents.
I would say that.
Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Laura? Yes. Christie? Yes. Jody? Yes. All right, action item B, resolution approving revenue purpose statement, ordering an election on a revenue purpose statement to authorize expenditures from revenue received from the state secure and advanced vision for an education fund, SAVE, and ordering the publication of a notice of election. Okay.
These two?
Yeah.
Next go together.
Yeah, what's what's the difference on these, Lisa?
Well, we need a revenue purpose statement first because the second resolution requires it.
Okay, and they're, but they're two separate resolutions.
Yeah, you you did a re- a revenue purpose statement um previously back in two thou- I think it's two thousand eight. Um, and when the legislature extended the twenty nineteen law, they made all of those revenue purpose statements expire in twenty thirty-one. So despite the fact you didn't put an expiration date in, and the legislature decided there's wisdom not to allow you to continue it forever, but they want an expiration um to cover then the new taxes they view it for twenty thirty-one to twenty fifty-one, they want the local patrons to uh vote on continuation back.
So is that what this one would do? It would go from twenty thirty-one to?
Well, you wouldn't have an expiration date again, but if legislation follows suit, they will expire it if they ever do an extension. So I think we're up to like two hundred and maybe fifteen districts or so, either have it on the ballot or have already voted it since twenty nineteen.
So, okay, so almost everybody, every district in the state is having to do this at some point.
Yep, prior to twenty twenty.
Okay, but if it, if we put it on, I mean, right now we're good till twenty thirty-one?
Yep, yeah, you're still good twenty.
So if we put it on and it doesn't pass, we're still good to twenty thirty-one?
Yep, right.
Before I start hearing, I think it was April or May, when I looked back at your board minutes, you had discussed having revenue purpose statement put on in November twenty twenty-three's election. Um, so you had already been discussing it and looking at it, and you had knew people that came, didn't know that, so you've talked about it, right, today?
For discussion, if somebody understands what we're approving. I would move to approve the resolution uh for approving the revenue purpose statement ordering an election on the revenue purpose statement to authorize expenditures for the revenue received from the state secured advanced vision for education.
Second.
Okay, Josh?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Action item C, resolution supporting the proposed issuance of approximately eighteen thousand, eighteen million, five hundred thousand dollars in school infrastructure, sales services, and use tax revenue bonds. Uh, the board may have some discussion uh if you'd like to, or someone to make a motion.
Yeah, I think it, I I don't know, I guess I, my question was is whether we were I guess bound by this, if we do pass this resolution, or if we can uh, you know, we did, nothing means we have to spend this money without going back to the uh, the drawing board and those things. I guess that's just what I want. Yeah, those were the questions that I wanted answered. So really, I mean, I, maybe people won't believe us, but uh, I guess that doesn't mean necessarily that we're gonna build the field house or save money. I mean, just by passing this resolution, that's just this board member's intent.
It's giving, I I think I like the way Travis said it. It gives us an option, option.
And it gives us the authority to exercise that.
I'm to approve resolution supporting the proposed issuance of approximately eighteen point five million school infrastructure, sales services, and use ta- tax revenue bonds.
I'll second.
Lauren?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Action item D is to approve recommendations to hire. We have ten.
Did we lose that many special appears that will hiring that many special appears? Or is it?
It'd be really good.
Okay, so it's not an increase, it's just.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I move we approve the recommendations of hire.
Second.
Christie?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Laura? Yes, and welcome to the district. Uh, action item E is to approve resignations. That's three people, four positions. That could just be my motion.
Yeah, I know they approve resignations as presented.
I'll second. Jody?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Action item M is to approve open enrollments. As of Monday.
Move we approve the open phones.
I'll second.
Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Action item G is to approve vendor contracts. Uh, there are four of them, and or do we vote on all those together, Lisa, or they should be separate? Shouldn't they? They're kind of different.
They are different. You can choose to do, if you want to approve all vendor contracts, or if you want to do them individually, it's however the board prefers.
Okay, let's um, let's take them separately because they're different. The first one is uh an athletic trainings contract um with A performance. And it looks like we have two different proposals, so you'll need to specify which one. I think one of them was just for an increased coverage. And we had a recommendation from uh Mr. Mitchell, who's the the he prepared to answer. Andy, do you want to like briefly?
Uh, we, we I think this performance is good. They used to do ours long time ago. Obviously, the Boston doing business with the medical personnel has went up significantly. I'd say you talk to several groups. And we're, you know, our coaches that are at yearly meeting last week were highly in favor of doing the increased coverage, and I agree with them. To get that familiarity with the, with the trainer, with our students, and otherwise we wouldn't have.
And the funds are coming out through all the support accounts?
No, are just partially. Initial with a lower bid from the district. And that was the academy out there, but it's just use of the activities count in good, very good standings for this year to get us through that cost to me. That cost to me.
Three questions. I have to approve proposal number one for athletic training contract. Lauren?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Okay, uh vendor contract number two is a consortium agreement. Uh for Children's Square and for Heartland Family Service. Uh Children's Square for Learning Services, Heartland Family Services for Therapeutic. And this is, we've done these kind of contracts pretty much every year. It doesn't obligate us to use those services, but it does give us the option.
We will, we approve the agreement with the Council of Us Consortium.
I'll second.
Christie?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Laura? Yes.
Uh vendor contract three is an athletic sharing contract for swimming with the Griswold School District. Do you?
It's a, it's a two-year agreement with Griswold, so the students of Griswold, boys and girls, who want to join our swim team. Their boards are approved, so our board could uh tonight approve that contract.
And we had one student from Griswold swimming with us before, or are there more than that? They're interested?
I think there's more than.
Do you know, Andy?
Andy, what's how many, how many Griswold kids wanna swim?
Uh for the girls, one girl. Uh for boys and. One or two.
Okay.
We're waiting to hear that, we don't know the voice network. Yeah.
I I think a two-year contract seems like a good idea, because that gives a little bit of time to build some momentum.
Okay, that's, I mean, my question is why two years? That we've been like.
Well, I think it's nice that your kids can have that, yeah, stability.
I'll move that we approve the athletic sharing contract for swimming with Griswold High School.
Second.
Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Okay, uh the fourth vendor contract is uh with early childhood consultation. So what, is this just another one or?
Well, I think this, I mean, I'm, this is kind of new ideas, but I almost did this, did this say um. Something that we use in our discretionary AEA funds towards?
In in the past, that was part of that. Uh support that AEA would provide. Well, no, it's a payment form. Uh service. And she's no longer with it.
Yeah, she's retired.
Staff likes her, they wanna use her. Uh for different types of P D and advisements to see how. Breaks out.
So that's where our funding source for that's coming from.
So instead of putting all our, we we were able to hold back ten percent.
Okay.
Of our special ed bonds that normally go to three and three meals at A A.
Well, I would move to approve the contract for that.
Awesome. Laura?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Uh upcoming dates, our regular board meeting will be held on September tenth at six thirty P M right here. And I will take a motion to adjourn. Someone else? Okay, all in, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you, we are adjourned.